As council members and certainly for a generation or more in the city. And the gravity of the situation which I know the Budget and Finance Committee has been tackling, we have been watching Rome begin to burn and we're finally stopping the fiddling and we're going to start to do the fixing. We have to do some very serious work colleagues and as Mr. Smith said and to reiterate a couple of his points, we're going to be the bearers of a lot of bad news. Now, we have good news, it's a contrast to the state. The worst bond rating in America now comes from the state of California of any state. As you know, the city of Los Angeles though has one of the highest bond ratings of any big city in America because we've always done a good job with what we have. But nobody has much this year because all revenues are down due to the economy. We can't have rosy projections, we can't think about new programs, it is not what we are going to expand, it is how much we are going to cut and how deeply. And if we don't do it now, we will do it later and we will do it more sloppily and we will do it deeper if we do not do that right now. I'd like to ask our CLA, because a number of us, we've launched conversations with the mayor's office and we're having good collaborative meetings there in the ERC because our employees we owe, because of their work to us, we owe them the faith of an honest discussion from the beginning about how severe this is. If you could lay out for the council, what is the worst-case scenario looking forward in these next couple of years? The CAO has projected some but that you've looked at. And I want to be clear with our employees, we are not putting these forward as any proposals at this point because our desire is to first go to our employee groups and say, "Help us solve this problem together." How can we do this? Because I know it is the desire of this council to keep as many people in their jobs, not to add to the layoffs, not to add to the shortfalls in our economy, not to compound the home foreclosures and all the other suffering that goes on in tough economic times. But lay out for us, what would this be the equivalent of? We've heard the mayor say it's the equivalent of 4,800 of our 40,000 roughly employees. But if we talked about a combination of layoffs and furloughs and cutting our equipment purchases in half and looking at our COLAs. And many of these things are difficult to do because we've already negotiated them. But just to help the council wrap their head and the public wrap their head around the math, walk us through some of the scenarios of what this would mean to balance the budget this year. And assuming the stock market doesn't recover during this year, where we're going to be at for our pensions?
Certainly, Mike. Again, to be clear, I'm not making any recommendations here because what I'm going to say is not going to be very pleasant. But looking at perhaps, as I indicated, 4,800 positions is certainly not going to happen. I do not believe that that's feasible. But looking at a scenario of eliminating 2,500 positions either through retirements or layoffs, every non-public safety employee in the city taking one furlough day a month, cutting our equipment in half and eliminating COLAs for non-public, eliminating the COLAs, we would still have a $100 million deficit.
And now the matter is before council as amended and that would be including 17A and also the reports back including Ms. Grule's request to have a special presentation on pensions.
And the first week of April.
Yes.
That matters before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That matter passes. Thank you.
And joining us now by phone is Budget and Finance Chairman Bernard Parks. Councilmember Parks, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
We just saw some of the updated financial report for the city. It looks bad for this year, even worse for next year as Los Angeles just broke.
Well, we're not broke, but we're going to have to be very smart in how we use our money. The thing that's unusual for the next couple of years is that normally when we were in some form of budget distress, it was because our expenditures got out of hand. The last couple of years, what's unique is our revenue sources are dropping dramatically and we're also spending more than our allocation. So both of those are coming together is what puts us in this bind.
Certainly we'll get through this because frankly there's no other choice, but city services will be greatly impacted. The big question on a lot of people's minds, will we see a reduction in public safety areas such as police and fire service?
Well, I think that's going to be a major policy decision for the council. But what we're confronted with very, very clearly is that we have budget shortfalls, we have a budget that's going to be at just barely over $4 billion. We have some choices. As we said in the council the other day, you can actually cut 21 departments out of the city's government just in total and not cover the entire deficit. And so I would suspect that you're going to have to go across the board and cut a variety of things because the most expensive things we have are public safety, but they currently account for 70% of our budget. So if we cut 30 to 40% of every other department other than public safety, then we will end up with them being accounting for well over 80-plus percent of the city's budget. But all of those services that the public expects, such as streets and sidewalks and trees and alleys, those issues will be cut down to the point that many of them may not be able to provide much of any service. So I think that's a policy decision. Do you maintain the police and fire at the current level and not have any cuts whatsoever? And everything else gets decimated? Do you close libraries? Do you cut hours on parks and recreation? Do you have lack of staff when these parks are used? And I think what many people have expressed a concern about is that the very time that we're in a financial crisis where many people are going to be without funds to go to the movies or do a lot of recreational things, if the last thing you should be doing is cutting the free services within the city such as Wreck-It Park, libraries and other things where they have access to. So the major policy decision for the council will be, how do you go about prioritizing the minimal dollars we have and at the same time be sensitive to what you may have to cut as far as laying off of personnel and people losing their job? Are people willing to cut 40-some-hundred positions out of other departments to ensure that the police and fire are untouched? Those are all very critical policy decisions that we're going to have to grapple with after April the 20th when we receive the mayor's budget.
Because of that 70% number that you keep referring to every time we talk about this, the other 30% perhaps having to absorb at least most of the cuts. You just mentioned maintenance services, streets, trees, things like that. What caught my ear frankly, Councilmember, was taking the city attorney's office for example and completely eliminating it as a possibility. That seems unimaginable.
Well, the thing is this is that you could make some cuts to the point that they, in the sense of them handling the several, the tens of thousands of criminal cases and particularly the litigation against the city, you could harm them immeasurably if their resources are cut dramatically. So I think these are the things we have to look at is that no one service should take the brunt of the cuts, but it's going to require cooperation in which you set the priorities. And I don't believe honestly from my perspective that you can have a budget in the situation that we're in today that can say nothing's on the table. The other issue is it seems not in our interest to move forward on a budget for this coming year that we know we can't maintain the following year. So if you go forward and hire more police, more fire, more city attorneys, whatever you hire next year, and if you can't maintain it in year 10, 11, then what have you really done as it relates to providing service to community? I think this is a clear indication that the budget's going to have to reduce to the size of the revenue that we can be assured of and we're going to have to hold people accountable to spend within their limits only when the funds begin to increase to where you can start looking for adding services. And even if we get a windfall like people are talking about selling some of our infrastructure parking lots, even with that, if that windfall should come, you can ill afford to buy personnel with them because you don't have that same windfall coming the following year. So you're going to have to look at how windfall money is being used, should it be spent on part of the general fund should be increased, should you put it in places where you have one-time expenses so when the service is over, you no longer have an obligation? These are all the things that have to come up. And again, you know, with the pensions alone, pension, medical costs and workers' comp, are three areas that are going well beyond the city's ability to maintain. We have a workforce of 36,000 people and with the pension obligations, workers' comp and medical, we cannot sustain the current system of pensions, medical plans and workers' comp.
We just heard you and your colleagues talk about a combination of layoffs and early retirements. The number 2,500 was thrown around, you just mentioned 4,000 as a possibility. Have we even started that process yet?
Well, beginning to look at it and begin to see what the numbers are because depending on where the priorities are, if you decide that the police and fire will go untouched, you're talking about 4,800 cuts in other parts of the city. If you're also balancing where you're able to negotiate with the unions and reduce their, eliminate the COLAs that they are expecting next couple of years, if you're able to get some furlough days and people are going to take off voluntarily or forced volunteer, you're saving funds on the salary account. But in order for people that are eligible to retire to make a decision to retire, they're going to have to make a decision that going into retirement is better than what might be their expectation while staying on. So if they're, they're going to have to work less hours and get less money, if their pension contribution is increased, those things make it to the point where people may decide it's better to go to the pension because the pension has an annual cost of living. The other issue, you're going to have to have a balance because merely just having people on the payroll working less does not cut your pension obligation, your workers' comp or your medical. Because they may work less hours, but you're still obligated for the 100% of those three funds. So you're going to have to have a combination of a variety of things. And if people voluntarily retire because they're eligible, that is assistance, but you certainly cannot begin to rehire their replacement or else you're just creating a larger void in the budget.
I also want to point out, as you very well know, COLAs, the cost of living adjustment and in many cases that has been negotiated. What other levers do you have? Do you have other strategies to help make ends meet and get us back on track?
Well, I think the issue is we're going to, again, you know, I think realistically and many people have said that the city has been very generous to its employees and we hope that in the negotiation with employee organizations that they understand that and that they're able to come to grips with what's going on in the rural economy and come to some decisions that allows the city to maybe get some give-backs so that they can balance the budget, but also save some jobs. Because, you know, we've seen some cities where people have held, unions have held strong and said irrespective of loss of job, we won't give up any benefits. Well, you can't keep the benefits in the same number of employees. So we'd hope that that's going to be one of the primary issues of negotiating with the employee unions to understand that the city is in dire straits. There is no debate as to the financial situation. And I think the other issue we have to be cognizant of is that even though our revenues are running short, we also are contemplating the lack of resources or at least the late resources from the state government and the federal government. So depending on what they do with their budgets could continue to impact the city's budget. So we're looking at all of these issues, we could make very good decisions about the funds we have available, how we're going to allocate them. But if all of a sudden the state government decides not to send us our gas tax money or they decide not to send us our block grant money or other kinds of grant monies, then we're going to end up making, having to make other decisions and move funds around. The city of LA has somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 to 80 projects that are depending on the state bond money that has been voted on by the public. Prop 40, Prop K, Prop 12, Prop 1B. If those funds aren't forthcoming or if they're held and delayed over a period of time, those projects go wanting. And depending on where those projects are in their closure, the city's going to have to make decisions on how they bring funds from other places to finish projects that are practically completed.
You're practically out of money, we're out of time. District 8 Councilmember and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee Bernard Parks, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much, Jack.
The review of the mayor's budget by the Budget and Finance Committee will take place over a number of days and will be carried live right here on LA City View, Channel 35. Consult your viewer guide for air times. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. If you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline, the 213-473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings also beginning at 10 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 6th, 2009. On behalf of Cameron Keys and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Boak-Joy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I am Assistant Pro Tem Councilmember Jan Perry. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall and to our Los Angeles City Council chambers while we are awaiting a quorum. I'd actually like to ask, I believe we have some visitors today from the University of Southern California. Why don't you stand up? Mr. Parks, did you want to recognize these folks from USC? Stand up. Don't sit down.
No, we just wanted to basically identify, we have several students from USC. They're here on a class assignment to study what goes on in city council. I advised them earlier that we're not as confused as we appear, but that they wanted to come in and so I wanted to make sure they had a chance to meet Ms. Perry because her district is right next to the campus. And also, many of the folks here are alumnus of SC with Greg Smith over there. Some of these folks are from another school in the city, but we won't comment on that. What's that? Pepperdine, there's a Pepperdine, there's, I think, Occidental, there's some UCLA. But again, you probably remember UCLA, there's a football game a couple of times a year and we won't even go into it after the last eight years. I just want to say thank you for being here and enjoy yourself, have a chance to meet some of the council members and take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange, is there anybody you would like to introduce today?
Oh, Ms. Perry, I just want to introduce you. Let's give Jan Perry a big hand for running the council right now. And I just want to say there, television is working in City Hall today, a show called Heroes is being filmed in the rotunda. And our rotunda out here for the students at USC and others is probably the most filmed rotunda. It's a federal building that they're proclaiming that space to be right now. Filming is very important in Los Angeles, provides over 250,000 jobs to Angelenos and to see television industry pick up, it's real important, real key. So we certainly welcome that as well. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And today is March 10th, 2009, Tuesday. The council does meet three days per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays and the meetings are open to the public. For those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, the meetings are televised on cable, Channel 35, or can be listened to and viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org or on council phone at 213-621-CITY. We are still awaiting two more members for a quorum, so in the meantime, Mr. Labange.
Madam President, I wouldn't also for the benefit of our students from USC Journalism. In the back right there is a great gentleman named Alex Baum. Give Alex a big hand there, he's the bicycle advocate for the city, immigrated to the United States from France, was a freedom fighter, was a very special, special man, but he's been an advisor to the late Mayor Tom Bradley, to Richard Riden, Jimmy Hahn, and also Mayor Antonio Villagosa on bike issues, which are so important to expand the biking opportunities for people throughout Los Angeles. Alex, good to see you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. We're awaiting the arrival of Mr. Rosendahl and then we'll have a full quorum.[301.18]
Representative in the chambers?
Do not know.
If a mayor's representative...
What do you need, Mr. Labonge?
I have an idea, but I wanted to talk to the mayor's office.
Okay.
Usually the mayor's representative.
If you have an idea, there's a phone call, there's a phone right behind you.
I know there's a phone, and there's also a microphone.
Okay.
There's a phone and a microphone, I'm using the microphone.
Well, you can use the more sophisticated form of communication.
So if there's a mayor's representative within the sound of my voice, if they come to council chambers, it seems I got an idea I think they'd like.
Okay, Tom Labonge has an idea, and he's put it out there, and hopefully someone will follow up with him. Thank you. We're just awaiting the arrival of Mr. Rosendahl. I don't want to cancel the meeting today because the quorum is even more tenuous tomorrow, we have a longer agenda tomorrow, so whatever we can get done today. And Mr. Labonge, your mayor's representative, has arrived. So you can now speak to him. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, the meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weesa, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, if Mr. Smith would lead us in the flag salute?
If all in the audience will please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join with me in pledging allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I think it's best to run through the agenda before taking a public comment, so, Mr. Clerk, if you would.
First items on the agenda, items one through three are: street lighting districts noted for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on March 31st.
All right, are there any specials before us, colleagues? Okay, so, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item four is the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District noted for public hearing, and there is a card on that matter.
All right, so we'll hold that item for discussion.
Items five through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, would you please open the roll on those items, unless there are any specials? Close the roll.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Parks, I didn't see you. You want to make a motion to reconsider item 2027? Open the roll on reconsideration on item 27? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
All right, Mr. Weiss, did you want to...
You went fast, can we just reconsider 17, and then do another roll call on that, please?
All right, Mr. Weiss would like to make a motion to reconsider item 17? Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Alarcon, did you have a...okay, great, all right. He just made, it's back up, it's a special now, yeah. All right, next item?
Items 28 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration. There is a request to continue item 29 and 36 E and F due to tomorrow's meeting.
Without objection, that'll be the order on those items. And, Mr. Parks, did you have a question or comment?
Special on 40, that's an item we'd like to get voted on in open session because it's merely a change in the payment structure.
All right, so we'll call 40 special. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, Madam President, you do have cards on a number of those items.
All right, do you have a list of which ones?
Item 28, 32, 33, 36, 37, and 38.
All right, so those items will be called special. Next item?
That would leave the remaining items.
Okay, so then open the roll on the remaining items. Ms...hold on. No, we're not there yet, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next order of business?
On the supplemental agenda, items 41 through 49 are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Members, any specials? And, Mr. Rosendahl?
49, special, please.
Okay.
And, Madam President, you do have cards on 41, 43, and 45.
Those will also be called special, so please open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next order of business?
That would take you back to public comment.
All right, thank you very much. And we have a number of public comment cards, so I'm going to call them in groups of three. The first three speakers will be Diego Canty, is Diego Canty here? Deje? Sorry, Deje Canty, and then George Garrett. Mr. Garrett, did you get lined up? Is Mr. Garrett here? Great, come on up. And then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Deje Coutier, reside in Central Hollywood. Now that the moratorium on medical cannabis dispensaries has been extended for its final six months, we must roll up our sleeves and get workable dispensary regulations completed, heard, and approved now. I ask that you please officially reject the city attorney's third unworkable draft ordinance, and give that office a deadline before the end of this month to provide the draft that the council requested. Or even better, move forward and, with the working group's draft now, and reconvene the medical cannabis working group now, so that we can finish the important work and see this process through as the council intended. The ICO expires very soon. When the working group met regularly, we were on track to present you with the completed draft ordinance by January of 2008. The city attorney has wasted valuable time and resources at the expense of our city's public safety. He obviously does not want to participate with this council's spirit of working together. So I urge you, as our city's legislative body, to move forward and make safe dispensary regulations for the city of Los Angeles a reality in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our next speaker. Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm George Garrett, and I'm representing my anorexic daughter, who's not only alive, she beat it. We have one problem, we still owe Smile Makers on Robertson Boulevard $500, as all my money went there. When I was here last, I think I talked to Mr. Alarcon, and I told him that I'd like to present a bill in the Senate to give quality dental care for any anorexic, whose bill is enormous, so if he can give me the name of the senator, I'll get in touch with his email or website. Third, I was very disappointed that when I went to Mr. Weiss on Robertson to get information on how to prevent the levy taken on my bank account, removing all my funds, his little page boy said he would call in an hour. I went twice, I got no calls. The title of this paper, if you want a copy of it, is called, I think Governor, our Governor had a hand in the franchise tax part, taking my money out. Name of this paper, if you want a copy, is called, "Has Arnold Been Audit Again?", by George Garrett. I'm currently working on a Trojan, the greatest Trojan that ever lived, and it'll be in your bookstore, I hope, this year. Thank you for coming, and thank you very much for letting me talk.
Dr. Clyde Williams, and following Dr. Williams will be Richard Kearns. Mr. Kearns, are you here? Okay, come on up, and then John W. Dutchover.
Good morning, my name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Caltrans is coming under in Northeast LA again. They want to close the I-710 forty-year-old gap with the state route 710. The feds finally gave up on Route I-710. Caltrans is doing a study right now that is supposedly route-neutral, practical, and viable, but no program goals or objectives, no stated purposes, no selection criteria have been provided for reviewing and evaluating the proposed borings that are underway right now in the geophysical surveys. They don't want to know the differences between Alhambra and El Sereno for one of the borings, they misplaced it. Route-neutral means not in South Pasadena, and not in Alhambra, so let's give it over to El Sereno, as they tried to do in 1992 through 95. Please make sure that the LADOT and the Board of Public Works protects the communities of Northeast LA from Caltrans and the future environmental and geological risks that the underground route will subject the communities to. Members, Weesa and Reyes should also try to protect these communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns, followed by Mr. Dutchover. And then the next speaker after Mr. Dutchover will be Joseph Delory. Okay, great.
Hey, good morning. Richard Kearns, poet activist, 5th district. I've given the clerk a copy of my prepared remarks. Thank you for extending the medical cannabis interim control ordinance for six months. This has been a rough season for moratoriums, as we've discovered with the ICO and all that digital building decoration stuff. My understanding is that 40% of the signage that's out there is illegal. Sounds kind of familiar. Right now, there are 187 medical cannabis dispensaries operating in good faith under our ICO, roughly another hundred operating under ambiguous and unprocessed and variably legit claims of hardship, and another hundred clinics out there just opened after the ICO went into effect. Let's call them rogue clinics. My fear is that if we wait for another four to six weeks before we begin figuring out how to enforce the ICO, we're going to have an additional 150 to 200 rogue clinics open in the wake of the Attorney General's statement. There are volunteers in our community who can help everyone in this issue. Volunteer medical cannabis patients and caregivers and advocates can serve on an advisory oversight board and can assist the city to collect information, hold hearings, inspect sites, and a number of other activities. It is important to move quickly and decisively on this as a deterrent to new rogue clinics. I believe we can assemble a volunteer inspection administrative assistant team of six in the next week. Those team members can focus on sites of hardship cases, another six volunteers can be available in two weeks. We can talk about the details, but I think you get the picture. This is the beginning of a doable solution. We can become part of the infrastructure, a sort of embryonic, metaphoric neighborhood council for the medical cannabis community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Dutchover.
Good morning, counsel, thank you for taking the time to hear me. I don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to first congratulate the voters of California for passing Proposition 215 and Senate Bill 420. I never imagined that there would be a time where I would be able to get this medication that I definitely benefit from, from with depression and physical pain. If this is taken away, I don't really want to go back to trying to get it off the streets from people who basically are just out to make money, instead of trying to help the I just hope, I just hope something, some sort of resolution can be found to continue this program and allow it to benefit the citizens of this great state, and the patients of which we depend on the, I'm sorry, the dispensaries. Please don't let it die. Thank you very much.
Mr. Delory? Followed by Mr. Delory will be Zuma Dogg and Meru, I can't read the writing, it looks like E-U-G-Y-S. Go ahead.
Good morning, counsel, my name is Joseph Frank Delory, registered voter from the city of Los Angeles, I'm also Republican. As my friend John Dutchover, I'd also like to thank the voters for Prop 215, SB 420. Without it, I wouldn't be able to have access to the medications that I now have. I use other medications that are given to me by the VA for a condition, but they do tax my organs more than medical cannabis would. And in fact, there are days I go without my medication, just so that my organs wouldn't be so bad off. I took a course in psych while in college, and so I learned pretty much quite a bit about cannabis and psych maladies, and for me, cannabis really helps. And I just hope that there can be some way of keeping the dispensaries open and not having them get closed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zuma Dogg? And then, I think this says Mervin Evans, is this Mervin Evans? Would you come on up? And then Wanda Solomon after Mervin Evans. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, my name is Zuma Dogg, and we recently was on the ballot for mayor of Los Angeles, and the votes aren't counted, I get about 10,000 votes. As a guy who just put his name, I didn't spend a penny. So basically, yes, thank you, you can applaud, basically, the mayor pissed me off, and I voted against him 10,000 times. Hey, don't piss me off, I'll vote against you 10,000 times, okay? So it feels great, I'd like to thank everybody, I just feel very blessed and fortunate, the response of the community. But right now, I think we need to move things to the next level, as Antonio's been re-elected, well now he's running for governor, and so just as Zuma Dogg has been here for his reelection for mayor, I will now be here every step of the way to prevent Antonio from becoming governor. California needs a great governor. California needs a great governor under these times. Even LA Times that endorsed Antonio said he's just a good mayor, who we'd like to see him become a great mayor. Well, you know what, when he becomes a great mayor, then maybe I'll talk about endorsing him for governor. But I'd like to say right now that Mayor Antonio of Aragosa, he's a very dangerous, dangerous elected official. Okay, mi nombre es Zuma Dogg, Zuma Perro. Mayor Antonio El Abagado is, no, El Grande Calde, Antonio El Calde is muy peligroso. Okay, el principal máximo de preciar los fondos del principal máximo mismo de MC Hammer is muy irresponsible, and now we're talking about firings and all kinds of cuts in services. So for those people that didn't understand what I said, the mayor's very dangerous. He took a record revenue and spent it irresponsibly like MC Hammer, and now the guy wants to be governor? Are you kidding me? He only got 55% of the vote, and Zuma Dogg was on the ballot, okay? The guy barely, and you know what, he barely squeaked by without a runoff with nobody against him. So I'm here to say Zuma Dogg is reinvented, so between now and 2010, I'm going to make sure that the mayor does focus and become a great mayor for the next four years, and never becomes governor.
Mr. Mervin Evans, followed by Ms. Solomon, and then after Ms. Solomon, we will switch to Van Ays, and Miriam Fogler will be first up.
Hello, my name is Merv Evans, and I'm a proud veteran of the 1st and 10th Air Cavalry United States Army. And I believe that this city desperately needs an Office of Veterans Affairs. There are 27,000 homeless individuals who are veterans in our city, that's unacceptable, there's no public policy that can make that right. Those veterans have given everything, they have given their lives to make our freedom free. We need to protect our veterans. Therefore, Mr. Parks, I would greatly appreciate if you'd urge the mayor to open an Office of Veterans Affairs. Thank you.
Good morning to the President and the President presenting pro tem and council members and guests. My name is Wanda Solomon, I'm a constituent and single parent, and supporter of this city for many years. First, I'd like to ask if Gary Miller, the chief legislative analyst, is present, and if he is, someone could connect me with his assistant deputy, I have some important information to share with him. My next point is also to remind the council, while the mayor is away in Washington DC with his team to lobby for additional stimulus money for Los Angeles, I'm praying for their safe return, and with good news for the people. In addition, I'm very concerned with where this money will be going. I'm very concerned that it is not always allocated to the people that really need it. It doesn't surprise me that when the money comes down, very seldom it goes and gets to the right people. So I urge the council to no longer allow the homeless families and parents and children be left out. I hope you will consider my concerns, and I want to make sure that the USC students get this, that this is for the people, this chamber is for the people, and I'm very concerned that all the time, many times, we are not recognized, we are overlooked in this city. I want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to someone meeting me directly after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll switch to Van Ays now, and our first speaker in Van Ays will be Miriam Fogler, followed by Donna Pearman, followed by Rick Nightingale.
Good morning. I wanted to let you know, I'm picking up where I left off about our pensions, the city pensions, they should be left alone, the city has no right to use Wall Street or any kind of risk, because it's going to be not fair to the taxpayer having to pick up the tab for your mistakes here, folks. Those people that did it should be fired, just as the metro link managers that let that guy do what he wanted on the train in Chatsworth. So these people need to be accountable for what they've done to the city pensions, just as the county and the state have done too. And you guys have been responsible for that, and the unions should be on par with it too. Of course, I have a differ with Rick Nightingale on that, but I feel that the city should be very careful handling the pensions. Folks, you're all, your city council, your pensions here, folks, your children and their children, you want to have something, don't you? For retirement, when you, if you go away and want to retire, you want to put all your money into this. So you, you have a stake at this, folks. But I'm letting you know right now that I very much differ on Rick Nightingale, and the unions only take care of it, because they can be just corrupt. There should be an oversight here between the unions and the city to make sure the pensions are in hold, and that the taxpayers don't have to keep footing the bill to keep reimbursing this money. It should be in a safe savings, even if it's not of exactly good money interest, but at least something to save to make sure that the pensions are safe. Furthermore, we need to stop the overtime. You know, the city council loves LAPD so much and DWP and Water and Power, Water and Power should not get that, their big raises, they should be cut back. The city workers are making lot less than DWP and LAPD making overtime, so it should be evened out, so then the city would save a lot of money that way too.
Thank you very much, Donna Pearman is our next speaker, followed by Rick Nightingale.
I want to say yay, great, Zuma Dogg is back, and Antonio Lee's put Zuma Dogg as mayor. I'm sorry I missed the city council on Friday, but city council, don't pat yourself on the back because you were reelected. You were elected by a mere small amount of population. Most people out there, even those who voted, left out the council members. Apparently they didn't, apparently the council members didn't make an impact on the public. Zuma Dogg got more votes than the council members. I wish those council members who are against Prop B would have been more vocal, Councilman Zion, Parks, and Greg Smith. It's easy to say it after the fact. I'm mad at the public who didn't go out to vote. It's a very precious right now given to billions of people around the world, people who gave up their lives for the right to vote. Women and African Americans fought hard to be included. They didn't say, well, I will vote on this, but not, this one's not important. They would have been, they would love to vote for any election before they, before they were allowed to vote. So it was very important for them to be able to vote. I'm not happy for those people who were for Zuma, who were for Zuma Dogg but didn't, didn't go up there and vote for him. They didn't go out and vote at all. I'm glad Prop B went down, mostly the public loves, so I'm glad that one didn't went right. Most of the public loves to raise taxes, to complain afterwards. Don't vote for these things in the first place. People who don't know the city council is out for their own good and for the CRA. And the CRA takes all our tax increment money, and all you do is raise the meter fees, and the public doesn't, people can't afford to go shopping, and the places, and our sales tax is gonna go up, and people won't be able to afford anything. I'm gonna buy any big item out of state. I'm not gonna go buy this big tax over in July. You're gonna lose out. Thank you.
Next speaker, Rick Nightengale, followed by Matthew Dowd.
Good morning, Rick Nightengale. I wanna thank Dennis Zion and Mr. Smith and for coming out, and Wendy Gruel to come out here in the audience and talk to us, and I'd like to especially to thank President Garcetti to turn around, come out and talk to me about the, about the pensions, what we were talking about. That the city has billions and billions of dollars from all the city unions and so forth, and I still think that somebody in the newspaper, we're better, should get on it about the city getting out of holding this, and each union should be responsible for the, each particular union for investing their money and get out of this situation that we do. Because everybody, all the other unions and so forth, please, fire and so, they got their own situation, don't involve the city. And this is where our problem is occurring, why you're in debt so much. Then I'd like to state, I saw Mr. Alcon regarding the poverty, that I saw that on Channel 35 the other night, regarding, they had some elderly people and so forth. Yes, they turned around, came into depression like my mother, and she taught us very good morals and so forth, how to save and survive and so forth. The new generation these days do not, as you saw from different people, how they do is like, they think $20,000, $30,000 and so forth is enough to survive in Los Angeles. There is just too many people, you know that for a fact. And the poverty level, even like over, I saw an article regarding, the thing, the situation is, is that they, a lot of them don't speak English, 40%, they said, 25% do not, didn't graduate from high school. How do you think that people can turn around and do this and get along in the city of Los Angeles, that's, excuse me, that kind of money? You have to go to school. I do not see and hear about the schools overcrowded from learning how to speak English and so forth. The people that come over the borders do not wanna speak English, they don't wanna learn. And if, I'd be great if the schools were overpopulated, that people wanna learn to speak English in a trade. Thank you.
Mr. Matthew Dowd.
First of all, I disagree about the voter turnout. I believe that's an indictment against the incumbents. People just didn't wanna mark his name, they didn't have a really viable alternative in their minds, so they boycotted the vote, that's why the mayor struggled. So I'm gonna talk about that a little later on, but yeah, I hope he gets the hell out of here as quick as possible. I'll run if I have to. Now, if I was running for the mayor of Los Angeles, you know, I'd care about, you know, the children first, the school districts, I know he says he cares about them, but he's more about the money. So, and I wouldn't be getting involved in the school, I'd be getting involved in all the things that affect the schools, and there's a lot of them. And the animal shelters and the zoo, and if that elephant exhibit isn't satisfactory, then we'll move the elephant out and we'll put something else in there. So if I was running for mayor, there's a lot of things I'd be taking care of that this current mayor is not taking care of, he's not even in town 89% of the time. He's probably not here today. I'll be here, I've been here for three years, I keep coming back because I cared about some things. Still got problems with Venice Beach, I've talked to Bill Rosendahl, he's down here right now. He keeps saying, oh yeah, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it, we've heard that forever, and now there's a bunch of musicians who are all getting cramped into one spot, and there's a whole lot of other people taking all these spaces that are meant to be for musicians. They have standing under the First Amendment, there's no dispute. So Jack Weiss, you can go talk to Bill Rosendahl now, because if you think you're gonna be the city attorney, we're gonna be coming at you with this one as well.
Just for the record, Madam President, a public comment speaker is allowed to criticize the policies, procedures, programs, and services of the city or its officials. Criticism against the services provided by an incumbent official may be inferred by the comments of the speaker campaigning against that incumbent official. However, criticism against another candidate who is not an incumbent of that office is outside the jurisdiction of this body unless the speaker could articulate a connection to the current provision of city services.
Thank you very much. We're back to City Hall now. Oscar Johnson, Herlinda Donis, and Sylvia Sosa.
Good morning, I'm Oscar Johnson, I'm a proactive, speak for the oppressed, and also speak for culture change. But I see in our government in the last years how we have descended. Upon our government, we have neglected our duty responsibility of the Constitution that we have sworn, sworn to uphold. We have made our society more dirty, we have made our society more filled with drugs and alcohol and violence. That should be stopped. Our policemen kill innocent people, there are no consequences of their action. It should be held accountable for murder as anyone else is held accountable for murders. We should end corruption in governments, we should end government waste, we should end government spending. We should end the genocide of the African-American peoples and the genocide that's going on through our government. We should indict our mayor of Aragosa for obstruction of justice. We have millions of dollars of construction sites going on in Los Angeles, but there are no African-Americans on site. That's against the federal law of trade. We also have many injustices with our bar and grill club have opened up on 39th and 13th with alcohol. We should stop drugs from coming into America, we should stop drugs from being grown in America. We should stop alcohol, liquor is a drug also, stop liquor from coming to America, stop liquor from being sold in America. We should have a clean government, we should have a fair government as this country started off. This country started off in the right direction, the country said family first. We should have no race with authority over another race, as we see with our flight authority over African-American peoples today, especially in the police department. We have people with authorities that don't care about us, we should have our own authority. We should read instead of what the Constitution teaches, read instead of what the Bill of Rights teaches, but we don't teach what is right, we teach to exploit, we teach nothing. We teach hypocrisy, artificial, and deceit, and broken promises. We don't teach us to go in the right direction. The American education has failed us because our homes have failed. Our country said family first, the Constitution said family first, and there will be no justice without our family, meaning a government that will care for our peoples, especially for the addition of friends.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Herlinda Donis.
Momento, señora. Usted necesita traducción en inglés. Momento. Good morning, my name is Herlinda Donis.
Soy un padre voluntario del Distrito Unificado de Los Ángeles.
I am a parent and a volunteer of the Los Angeles Unified Schools of Los Angeles.
Y ustedes se preguntarán qué hace esta señora aquí.
You might be asking, what is this lady doing here?
Pero creo que ustedes también todos saben que los padres del Distrito Unificado de Los Ángeles con los estudiantes somos parte también de ustedes.
But I think you all know that the parents and the students are part of this also.
Y este hoy estoy aquí representando a nuestra conferencia del Parent Summit, que es la tercera conferencia anual que tenemos.
But today I'm here representing the Parents Summit, that is the third conference that we have.
Y este propósito de hoy es de que siempre la ciudad nos ha tenido en cuenta para donarnos el centro de convenciones sin ningún costo.
The purpose that I'm here today is because the city has always given us the convention center without any cost.
Y este año nos van a cobrar una cantidad de 18,625 dólares.
This year, they are going to charge us 18,665 dollars.
Y como ustedes ya saben, este, pues esa cantidad lamentablemente no la tenemos.
As you already know, we do not have that money.
Entonces, si ustedes pudieron hacer un waiver para no cobrar cuando hicieron los Grammys...
If you were able to grant a waiver when you had the Grammys...
Creo que es más importante que nosotros como padres eduquemos a nuestros hijos y a nuestros padres, así que les pedimos por favor que tomen en cuenta esta situación y que también...
I think that it is more important for us as parents to educate our children and educate our parents, and that's why I am requesting that you take in consideration.
Eh, mi propósito de estar hoy aquí es de que ya tuvimos, pudimos hablar en la mañana con el representante, el señor Ed Reyes, él nos va a donar una cantidad de 2,000 dólares.
Today in the morning, we were able to talk to Mr. Ed Reyes representative, and he's going to donate us an amount of money.
Y si multiplicamos 2,000 dólares por 10 representantes que tengamos aquí...
He's going to donate 2,000 dollars, and if we can multiply 2,000 times 10...
Entonces vamos a poder hacer este, ese, eso posible para nuestros padres.
We will be able to make this possible for our parents.
Esperamos una cantidad de 3,000 padres para este evento.
We are waiting to have 3,000 parents during this event.
Tenemos de orador principal para este día al señor Arnie Duncan, secretario de educación de Washington DC.
We have as main speaker, Mr. Arnie Duncan, and he's coming from Washington DC.
28 talleres.
We have 28 workshops.
Así que por favor esperamos contar con el apoyo de ustedes para que, o hagan el waiver para que no nos cobren, o ustedes como representantes que son de nosotros también nos tomen en cuenta y de una u otra manera puedan darnos esa facilidad de conseguir el dinero.
We are waiting for your support, either to give us a waiver or to count with your assistance in order to get the money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, and then following the next speaker will be Ruth Bautista, and then Michael Hunt.
Good morning.
Soy Sylvia Sosa, persona que se llama señora Donis.
My name is Cynthia Sosa, and I am following Mrs. Donis.
Pedimos el favor que nos apoyen con el dinero que necesitamos.
We are asking you to please support us with the money that we need.
Para pagar el convention center.
In order to pay for the convention center.
Supuesto 18,625.
The cost is 18,625.
La oficina del consejo del señor Ed Reyes ya nos ha donado 2,000 dólares.
Mr. Ed Reyes office already donated 2,000 dollars.
Esperamos que los demás concejales nos quieran ayudar de la misma manera.
We hope that the other council members help us in the same way.
Y así como le donaron 124,163.
And the same way that they donated 124,163.
Para que hicieran los Grammys ahí en el convention center.
For the Grammys at the convention center.
De la misma manera les pedimos que nos ayuden.
We are asking them to help us in the same way.
Porque nosotros somos padres voluntarios.
We are parents that work as volunteers.
Para el Parent Summit.
For the Parents Summit.
Que en realidad les ayuda para toda la ciudad.
In reality, this is help for the whole city.
Porque con esta conferencia y los talleres que se darán...
With this conference and the workshops that will be offered...
Son apoyo para que no haya más integrantes de pandillas.
This helps in order to diminish the gang members activities.
Y para tratar de evitar que más niños dejen la escuela.
And this is to try to, you know, to avoid more children to leave school.
Así mismo, se imaginan ustedes el impacto que será para el secretario de educación de Washington.
Can you imagine the impact that this will have with the Secretary of State of Washington?
Que está invitado como orador principal de esta conferencia.
He has been invited as the main speaker for this conference.
De Parent Summit.
For the Parents Summit.
Lo hemos hecho por 12 años en el mismo lugar.
We have had this for 12 years in the same place.
Necesitamos de su ayuda.
We need your help.
Ahora, por eso estamos aquí este día.
That's why we are here today.
Tal vez ustedes no tengan a sus hijos en las escuelas públicas.
Maybe your children don't go to public schools.
Pero nosotros sí.
But our children do.
Y sabemos lo duro que es para nuestros niños.
And we know how hard it is for our children.
Pero esperamos contar con su ayuda.
We hope we can have your help.
Esperamos contar con la ayuda de todos ustedes para esta conferencia.
We hope to have the help of all of you for this conference.
Recuerden que todos estos estudiantes serán los votantes del futuro.
Remember that all these students will be future voters. Thank you very much.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Ruth Bautista, y soy padre voluntario de la organización de Padres.
Good morning, all of you. My name is Mrs. Bautista, and I am a representative of the parents.
Representamos a la organización de padres en colaboración.
We represent the parents in collaboration.
Pero ya no quiero repetir lo mismo que dijeron mis compañeras.
I don't want to repeat the same thing that my friends said.
Por una causa noble.
We are here for a noble cause.
Que son nuestros estudiantes y nuestros padres.
That are our students and our parents.
El estar aquí ante ustedes.
Being here before you.
Es para pedirles la colaboración de ustedes y que cordialmente están invitados al Parent Summit.
Is to request for your collaboration and to invite you to the Parents Summit.
Esto es una vez al año que se realiza en el convention center.
We do this once a year at the convention center.
Con la voluntad de tantos padres voluntarios.
With the willingness of a lot of parents that are volunteers.
Esto se organiza durante todo un año para que nuestros padres y estudiantes tengan este Parent Summit en forma de aprendizaje.
We organize this the whole year for our students to have this as a way of learning.
El invitarles a ustedes creo que será de mucho, mucho, mucha importancia y a grado.
To invite you will be very important.
Para que se den cuenta de ustedes cómo nuestros estudiantes aprenden al igual que los padres.
For you to be able to see how our students learn same as their parents.
Ya no queremos escuelas sobrepobladas.
We don't want overpopulated schools.
Y tampoco queremos estudiantes que hagan deserción escolar.
Neither students that drop out from school.
Queremos estudiantes universitarios como los que tenemos aquí.
We want university students like the ones that we have here.
Y no queremos a nuestros estudiantes clase obrera. Así que la colaboración de ustedes será de mucha importancia para nosotros.
We don't want our students as factory workers. Your collaboration will be very important for us.
Que ya dijeron mis compañeras, 2,000 dólares por uno, por cada uno de ustedes hará la diferencia de muchos estudiantes y muchos padres.
My partners already said that 2,000 dollars from each of you will make a great difference for our parents and for our students.
Mr. Michael Hunt.
Thank you, guys. My name is Michael Hunt, and what I'm hearing from these ladies is that they need a fee waiver. It's easy for city council to do, so you guys need to send somebody over there that speaks Spanish and get them a fee waiver. Thank you, guys, and congratulations to all the winners that really participated in the election and who won and made office. I hope that really means something to you guys, that you guys will switch and change your paradigm and really work with the people and work for the people as our new elected officials and things like that, to really come out and speak up for what's right and start changing and start getting people jobs and start really getting economy back together here in Los Angeles. Those things are important to really put people back to work under any circumstances, and that our newly elected officials will help. Now, my last minute I'm gonna spend is, I need the Sergeant of Arms... Now, my last minute I'm going to spend is, I need the Sergeant of Arms, because we need to take care of this bill right here that we got from a jury trial, and he's going to be passing it out to each one of you guys so that we can go ahead, so that the city of Los Angeles won't have to pay the interest on the jury money and get it all taken care of. And we're reaching out to the 11th District to mitigate 2006 out and sit down in Bill Rosenthal's office to actually work this 2006 ordinance out, the same thing we did with Carol Sobel. I'm looking forward to that. And in that, you know, really putting Venice Beach back to its natural habitat, putting people back to work and making the East Side work and making the West Side work all together. Today I'm going to be at the merchants' meeting at 2 o'clock at Danny's to finding out what the merchants needs to work. And to Mr. Weiss, city attorney, get a program for the kids from 6 to 11th grade.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Next speaker is Isis, followed by Walter Bechtel. Is Isis here? Isis, you're our next speaker. Isis, followed by Walter Bechtel. Is Mr. Bechtel here? All right, great, you can come on up, Mr. Bechtel. After Mr. Bechtel will be Michael Carion.
Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. On this full moon, I, an independent California teacher, request that you esteemed caring citizens take note and take to heart the plight of the California Teachers Association rallying to maintain employment. On March 13, 2009, please join us and state your opposition of the senseless and massive layoffs and terminations hitting California teachers and beyond. In support of teachers, we ask that you wear pink. On this Friday, the 13th. For more info, visit cta.org. Further and most of all, please give our precious children a fair learning chance. Let us rally to offer every child a prime education for their overall well-being. Do not permit our children and youth to further suffer at the hands of a corrupt political legislative bureaucracy. Ethically, we must hold Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger's administration and Mayor Antonio Villagrosa accountable at the fundamental level, to say the least. Fellow Angelinos, you know we behold the power to vote, revote, repeal, impeach, and recall. Therefore, let us stand united at this pentacle moment. Together, we shall take firm and relentless action, never wavering, until we have attained triumphantly virtuous vindication over the evil powers that be here locally at LA City Hall. Be comforted, Angelinos, in knowing that on February 25, 2009, I told Phantom Mayor Villagrosa that he will face the inevitable recall. And on March 6, 2009, once again, standing here at LA City Council, I presented the recall petition form I wrote up with his name on it. Mayor Antonio Villagrosa, it's curtain call. Hasta la vista, and good riddance to bad rubbish.
Next speaker is Mr. Bechtel, followed by Mr. Carion, and then our final speaker today for public comment will be Mr. Anthony.
Hello. I hadn't intended to come in today, but I wanted to reemphasize the fact that I am an agnostic, and it says in the Bible that, you know, if you come and stand before these people and have something to say, don't plan what you to say, because I'm going to give you a tongue to speak with. Okay, I still, I don't know where that's coming from, but I do have a lot of respect for the one thing that says that, "Don't think for the many..." Something to the order that says, "Think not for the many words that you have to say that you're going to be heard." That makes a lot of sense to me, because I notice there's a lot of rhetoric and a lot of people reiterating the same things and going over it. It just seems to be more is said in less time and less words. And when I was on better speaking terms with some of the musicians in the city, we found that we could say a lot in just two to three minutes of time, because people, the more profound it is, whatever you have to say, you can say it in two or three phrases, and that has a tendency of sticking with these, the people's, sticks with their memory a little bit better than if you have a whole lot to say, or even if you write it out. I guess that's all I have to say today, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Carion, followed by Mr. Anthony. Is Mr. Anthony here? Okay, you can come on up after Mr. Carion.
Yes, my name is Mr. Carion, and I was wondering if the city attorney can sit down and quit talking like the rest of the people around here? Seems like we have double standards. Everybody's up here yakking away like Mr. Labon's over there.
Mr. Carion, if you could please...
There's nobody paying attention.
Hold his time, please. Mr. Carion, if you could please direct your comments to the body and not to individuals specifically.
Too much conversations going on.
If you'd like your time.
Yes.
Please proceed, thank you.
The LA Times has an article, your article, about the illegal dumping in your community, Ms. Perry. It says that in 2002, there were 359 cleanups. In 2008, there were 10. Mayor Villagrosa is responsible for that. He probably had more dates than he has cleanups. The problem is, on another page of the LA Times, it states that Mayor Villagrosa will focus on the current job. My question is, what job is that? The mayor, the governor, or the superintendent? Nobody knows who he works for. But now we have Mr. Zine over here talking. It's very difficult for the public to understand why people raise their voice up here, because the Sergeant of Arms goes out here and tells people to be quiet when they're talking, but he doesn't tell the council members to say anything when they're blabbing and blabbing on. I don't understand that. There's two rules here, and it's called hypocrisy. I'm just confused. You know, we turn around, Mr. Labon comes up and talks to me all the time about the illegal parking, he's going to do something. It's all lip service. He hasn't done anything yet. He's hoping that if I just don't say anything, I'll go away and it won't be anything, okay? I am addressing the city council about what Mr. Labon says. I am not speaking to him personally. It's lip service. He's out here telling the public what they want to hear, but he does nothing, just like now. He's sitting there speaking to somebody. Over and over and over, people come to the city council asking for your courtesy, but all you want is a paycheck.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony is our next speaker. Yes, Mr. Labon?
The speakers addressed the chair.
He has been asked to do that, and we have an opinion from the city? Okay, let me finish my thought. He has been asked to do that. The city attorney has indicated language on the record, he can do it again. If you would do that right now, Mr. City Attorney?
I could talk, he was speaking in the third person about council services, so I believe it was appropriate, even though it was mean spirited, even though it was appropriate, I would say.
Good night, Madam President. I do listen to everyone, and I do try to interact with those who will come down here, and that, and it's not lip service, okay? It's not lip service. I hear what people have to say, and I try to help them. This individual has some ideas that we want to pursue, and Mr. Fisher and others in the Police Department have talked, and Harry Edo over there in the Police Department is a liaison officer, equally knows about that. So we all work together, but I just don't want him to say lip service and not address the chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That marks the end of our public comment period. Oh, sorry, Mr. Anthony, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council. Listen up, viewers, this concerns you. All 15 of the council members sitting here are full of hypocrisy. You all lie with a straight face to your constituents. I watched in horror last Wednesday, the day after the elections whereby all of you stood here and said how you were going to handle the budget crisis we're now facing. Talking about furloughs once a month to save money, talking about cutting kids' programs to help save money. You use catchphrases like, "We have to tighten our belt." "We have to set the example." "We're all in this together." Cute, but what do you do? Last Tuesday, Election Day, you gave money. Let's call it what it is. You stole money from your constituents when you granted the fee waiver to the El Guido Festival and the Spring Carnival event. You gave them $105,000 of our money, your constituents' money, to have a party. With the city going broke at record-breaking speed, by the end of this year, we will have a deficit of $980,000. You're going to throw another party with our money? Are you kidding? How about helping all the families living out of the RBS in Venice? How about helping all the families that are displaced by the fires in Silmar? I just went to Silmar. The burned rubble is still there. Why don't all 15 of you take that $105,000 to that community and help get it cleaned up? The wolves are in sheep clothing, and they're sitting right here. Your lip service doesn't match your public service. With unemployment skyrocketing, with more constituents, one paycheck away from being homeless, your idea of "we're all in this together" is have another party? The behavior of all 15 of you is pathetic. Get this right, there are people out there that need help. We don't need parties all year round by us paying for it. It's off of the sweat of our backs that we pay for all of this. That's where you're getting the money from.
Thank you very much, and that marks the end of public comment. Mr. Clerk, next order of business.
Item four was called special for cards.
Mr. Alarcon.
I just wanted to address the comment with reference to the debris removal.
That's fine, and then I think Mr. Zine pressed his button also.
That process is moving forward because the city stepped in, and notwithstanding the fact we have no authority, we accepted the opportunity to help those folks, and anybody who's communicated to the victims, I think, knows that they are very pleased that the city is out there cleaning up the debris. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, I think you wanted to speak also.
Just briefly, Madam President, on the issue regarding medicinal marijuana for the folks that are here on that particular subject matter, we have extended the moratorium, and hopefully we can get the moratorium and the hardship exemptions heard.
Excuse me, Mr. Zine, that item is not on the agenda.
I know it's not. I was responding to the public comment that came, and a number of people spoke on it. I just wanted to let them know they were moving forward on this matter, and we're not ignoring it, just to respond to them in a courteous manner, that we are responding to that with the hearings on the hardship exemptions to come to a conclusion. Just want to let you know we have not ignored it. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And now we're on item four. There are two speaker cards on item four, Irene Germain and Wilson Liu.
Hello, my name is Irene Sukada Germain. I own a business gift shop in Little Tokyo at 340 East First Street. It's been around for 65 years, obviously not by me, but it's a family business. I'm not here to advocate dismantling the Business Improvement District. In fact, I appreciate all the work and expense that went on, that God is here. However, there's room for improvement. I walked three hours the last couple days, and I collected over 50 signatures. I've distributed copies for the council members, along with my letter. The petition reads as follows: One, to hold regularly scheduled meetings with proper notification to all payees of the BID. Two, provide an annual financial statement of actual expenditures. Three, have the administrator of the BID attend the Little Tokyo Community Council meetings to basically report the frequency to be determined. Four, maintain an updated website with the schedule of meetings, planned activities, et cetera. The comments I heard walking around Little Tokyo, some of them were very negative. They were saying things like, "They collect money and they do nothing for us." I corrected them and explained to them that the money goes to the security that everybody sees, and I personally witnessed the bike patrol doing very good things. However, I can't blame their feeling of disenfranchisement. The lack of communication between the BID is quite lacking. When I called Wilson Liu to ask when I could attend a meeting to get some, to bounce some ideas off of them, I was told that I should come here to city council. That's not what I had in mind. I'd also like to see a financial statement. I paid $1,400 last year. I would think the city council members would like to see a financial statement. Anyway, I guess I ran out of time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Liu.
Good morning. I'm here wearing several hats today. I try to be quick. I've been a longtime property owner and a business owner in Little Tokyo, and I here am supporting the renewal for a sixth year. I also am also president and co-chair of the Business Improvement District. A lot of things that Irene has said previously to you is probably very accurate in terms of what we need to do and continue to do. She did say something inaccurate that I don't believe I recall having a conversation with her as far as coming, suggesting that she come here to address you personally. I, as well as the rest of the board members of the Business Association, as well as advisory board, we will continue to encourage the talents in Little Tokyo among our BID members to solicit their ideas and their suggestions so that we can always build a stronger business environment in Little Tokyo, as well as preserving the Japanese culture that has been long since been there. So I extend both to Irene and everybody else that we will continue to work as a group and try to make a better community out of Little Tokyo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue on this item, so, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. Next item.
And, Madam President, for the record, that ordinance will go over to March 20.
Thank you.
Next item, item 17, called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon, item 17.
Where's Mr. Weiss?
Madam President, I believe Mr. Weiss also called that special.
Actually, Mr. Weiss called this special, but I'm happy to raise the issue. If the Housing Department could step forward. Item 17, Housing Department. This is a small item. It involves outside counsel. The Housing Department was requesting a $500,000 allocation in two years, $250,000 for the next two years. Actually includes this year, correct? This year and next year?
Well, good morning, Yolanda Chavez with the Housing Department. It's actually, it's a request for the allocation on an as-needed basis. So, for example, the last allocation to this fund was three years ago for $125,000.
And that was the concern that raised my concern about this. And it turns out, in a report back from the department, the average expenditure was about $56,000 a year, and the highest amount spent was $103,000 a year. So I was concerned that the $500,000 allocation may be a little bit high. In consultation with Mr. Weiss and Mr. Wesson, I think we, and the department, I think we've come to agreement that a $300,000 figure would be more reasonable, and the fact that you've expressed that this is to pay for litigation or to pay specifically for a litigator on specific cases is, it is necessary. But secondly, that you're targeting the most egregious offenders with these dollars that outside counsel is necessary on the litigation piece, but also we're using the money for good use. I'm fine with lowering the figure to $300,000 and over the course of two years minimum. And it's not, it's an account that can be drawn upon, it's not necessary, it won't be unnecessarily tapped into, and if that's the case, then I'm fine with that.
Just some clarification. One of the reasons is, I said, our last request for the account was at $125,000, and the reason that our request is this amount is because of current litigation that we're in that started last April. So we were not sure how long it was going to continue. We had a pretty favorable ruling last week, so we expect it would be over soon, but we have outstanding bills on that. So I just want to clarify that if, that we'll have to, as soon as this money is approved, be able to pay those bills, and if the litigation continues, we may have to come back for an additional request with an explanation.
Yeah, if you need the money, come back, but I think a $300,000 allocation...
Yes, we're fine with that.
Ideally for the next two years would be more acceptable than the $500,000. So I want to thank Councilmember Wesson for helping us understand this process a little bit better. little bit better.
I believe Mr. -- the Mr. Zine is now on the queue.
Thank you, Madam President. The, uh, question I have regarding this matter deals with the housing authority and restrictions of the funds. I understand there are restrictions on the funds and that there shall be no expenditure, transfer, or other form of disbursement of money from the fund, money, authority provided or granted with respect thereto, except for a purpose directly related to the implementation and administration of the city's rent stabilization ordinance. How do we get by the restrictions on those funds? According to the ordinance, um, it shows on the systematic code enforcement and also the rent stabilization trust fund, there's restrictions on how those funds can be used. How do we get by that with this fund that's been established for legal issues?
Right. Um, our city attorney could further, um, explain, but the, both ordinances are very clear that it is allowable to use funds in order to defend both ordinances, um, or to deal with cases related to either rent or, um, code enforcement cases. And so, that's how, so that's why there's an el, an eligible expense.
So, it's an interpretation by the city attorney that this falls under the guidelines and this is exempt from the restrictions imposed in that ordinance?
Exactly.
And now, it's down to $300,000 from $500,000, is I understand?
Right, right. And I want to clarify that depending on the type of case, we either use, um, rent code monies or we have allocated in the past money, our, um, our housing money, which includes home dollars, federal dollars, if we're dealing with loans or cases, um, related to those types of programs.
And does this stem from the Cecil Hotel issue regarding whether the, it's transient or residence? Is that the litigation that this is?
It's, it's, uh, yes. It's a case stemming from the residential hotel ordinance that was enacted, um, last spring.
Okay. And why can't this be handled in-house? Why does it have to go to outside counsel?
We, um, it's, as you know, we have, um, six city attorneys on our housing team. We lost one litigator, uh, during last year's budget process, so we really don't have the in-house support to be able to handle a case of this magnitude. It's in federal court.
So, there's still five attorneys, though?
There are five attorneys. We only have one full-time litigator on that team and she's pretty overwhelmed dealing with housing development cases.
So, the bottom line is, you need this, it may be expended, it may not be expended. This is going to be used if necessary, but not necessarily used.
Although, um, to clarify again, we do have outstanding bills on the Cecil Hotel lawsuit that we'll have to pay.
I understand that, but you're talking about additional outside counsel? This appropriations for additional outside counsel or to pay existing bills?
No, no. It's, it's to, it's to be able to cover what this, um, the current litigation that we're involved in.
And what's the anticipated cost?
It depends when the case is, um, completed.
What do we own so far?
We're, at this point, we're close to $200,000.
And the end is not in sight?
Well, we had a favorable ruling last week and so we expect it will be over soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Alarcon, for the second time.
To introduce a motion, uh, so I'd like to introduce a motion formally, and I understand Mr. Wesson is prepared to second it, uh, that would, uh, amend the amount from $500,000 to $300,000, uh, and that would be satisfactory. So, I, I make that motion.
Okay, without objection. There's no further speakers in the queue. Uh, I believe we should vote on the motion first. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk, or the?
Yet there's no objection. It'd be as amended.
Okay, then that item will be as amended, so please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine eyes, one no.
All right, next item.
Item 27, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chief. I would just like to make a verbal amendment on the committee report and that the, on page two, uh, that both of those allocations, the 1.6 and the 1.699, should go into the 1998 bond account 239 and scratch the, uh, 0809 library revenue source.
All right, that'll be without objection. Please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Uh, next item.
Item 28, called special for cards.
Uh, two speakers on this, uh, I'm sorry, three speakers. Mr. Zumadog and Isis, and then we'll go to Matthew Dowd in Van Nuys.
Twenty-eight. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Zumadog, then Isis, and then we'll go to Matthew Dowd in, in Van Nuys.
Yes, I'm glad to see other public comment speakers joining me in this one of top-two issues I'm concerned about as somebody who doesn't want the city sued into oblivion at the federal level. I believe we have a reason why we will be right here. It's the rent escrow program. And, uh, the way the situation works, people, is that throughout the city, we have, um, you know, buildings that are housing low-income people and the property owners that own these buildings. Well, the city of Los Angeles, Vierigosa, he likes to pretend he cares about property owners and he likes to pretend he cares about the low-income people renting. However, he's hurting both through this vindictive retaliatory, and I'm here to say corrupt, and racket of a program where the city will say, gee, uh, you need to make some aesthetic improvements on your properties under these harsh economic times. Well, the banks are not allowing those aesthetic improvements to be made unless the money toward those improvements is passed on to the renters. The city says, oh, you're bad landlords now because you won't make an aesthetic improvement. And then they say, uh, you're not going to get any money anymore. The city will now collect those fees and the property owners, they, they, they just can't put up with it anymore. So, yes, the city wins. Yes, the mayor gets his way. Yes, these property owners sell the properties to the special interest developers who the city gives them to. And then all those people that are, you know, it's the form of affordable housing. It's how the city's dealing with it. Well, all those affordable renters, they get kicked out into the streets because do you think they're going to be living in the L.A. Live or the Grand Avenue projects? The answer is no. So, this is a situation that will be addressed in federal court. Because if the city is using a vindictive retaliatory spirit to crack down to collect revenues from other people, that, my friends, is called racketeering. And each and every one of you will be named in this. So, I'm here to say it's time for the city to get with it. The mayor's very unpopular. And start representing the people. And yes, there's a time and place for REAP, but it's not in a racket.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Isis and then we will go to Van Nuys for Matthew Dowd.
Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. In reference to the rent escrow account program, AKA REAP, last week on March 3rd, 2008, Tuesday, I invited LA City Council, along with Attorney Rock Dogadio, to join me on a field trip to a scumlord building that is not up to grade. LA City officials, unethically, this low-grade developer has been awarded $58 million of our hard-earned taxpayers' money. For what? For violating tenants and all of the violating rights were taken away from these tenants. The Rent Stabilization Act was why removed? Why? Because this way the tenants don't have any say on the matter. And furthermore, this building that is not in compliance is way overdue and it should be after $58 million. Come on, they still can't get this building up to code? Look, this buck stops here. How much more money do you need to give them of our hard-earned tax-paying funds? We are so sick of this scumlord. Do something now. Bring this building into compliance. I and the Alexandria Apartments residents are waiting for you to act. We're at 501 South Spring Street. We'll see you there tonight. Please.
Back to Van Nuys, please, to Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. I want to take a minute on this one. These properties that are on here now, too, on this, uh, this item, there's a handful here. These are the properties that are actually being released from the REAP program. You know, and a couple, some of them are back to 2007, they've been in the program. But what happens here is if landlords who have deep pockets, they can afford to make these repairs and get their building back to code while their, while this money's in the rent escrow account. But landlords who don't have deep pockets, they're the ones who are unable to make the repairs and they're the ones who eventually lose their properties under this scheme. Because they, they, so therefore the, it's like Zumadog says, the ones with the money, the high-end developers, they end up cleaning up the properties and doing what they want with them and taking them away from the, the mom-and-pop owners who, um, who deserve to have a better shot. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no speakers in the queue on that item. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item.
Item 32, called special for cards.
Again, we go to Van Nuys for Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, I'll wave this one. Thank you.
No speakers in the queue on that one. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item.
Item 33, called special for cards.
Mr. Zumadog.
Wait.
Mr. Zumadog has indicated he does not wish to speak on this item. There are no speakers in the queue on this item. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item.
Item 36, called special for cards.
Um, we have cards from Mr. Zumadog, Mr. Anthony, Mr. Matthew Dowd in Van Nuys, and Isis. Mr. Zumadog, you are our first speaker. Mr. Zumadog is waiving his right to speak. On this item, Mr. Anthony, uh, you want, do you want to speak? Item 36, sir? Mr. Anthony said he will pass on item 36. Uh, Isis, item 36.
On this item, I'll take one minute, please. Item 36, I'll make it short and sweet, uh, special events. Okay, uh, first and foremost, um, I have requested that we implement on the following this here, uh, those Fearless Village Holiday Festival, the Oaks Holiday Walk on October, the Halloween Block Party on October 31st, and so on and so forth. It's the Motion Perry Garcetti Operation School Bell on Wheels, the Temple Asseas, uh, Purim Carnival, Temple Bed Am's Purim. Well, anyway, you get the idea. On all of these, can we please implement the food and can drive ASAP? People are hungry. We're waiting for you to act. Please take this into serious consideration.
Out to Van Nuys for Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. I want to, uh, take a minute on this one. I want to talk about Mr. Labonge, so I hope the city attorney can educate him about what the third person means when I want to talk about him and say whatever I want about him as well. As long as I'm talking about you, I can say whatever I like when it comes to your performance. And I see you're trying to put through some of these special event fee waivers here with Eric Garcetti. And, uh, I'm just going to run my eye over them, make sure that they're not grossly commercial like some of the other things we had people talking about in public comment today, like the Grammy fee waivers. So, I hope you're taking care of those fee waivers those ladies have asked you for today because, uh, I see you putting some through here in your district. You and Eric got together with three fee waivers, so, uh, tell Mr. Labonge to take care of that.
Thank you. Mr. Zumadog has withdrawn his waiver to speak, so, Mr. Zumadog, you can speak.
Yes, that's right. Withdrawing my wave here to speak. Yes, that means I can speak. Special event fees, I'd like to spend one minute here to say that I'm very impressed and pleased with councils, you know, scaling back of the special event fees. Uh, there are times when, uh, today, for example, they'll spend 500 there, uh, 500, a thousand here and there, but, uh, I do need to warn you again that, uh, it does get out of control on certain items like that El Grido thing. Let me tell you, that El Grido thing, that's, that's a federal investigation that needs to happen. And as I look here on the item 37, let's just say that the money is earmarked for the community and it's not supposed to be used for commercial entities. And here's one thing, oh, to address, to address, uh, Jam Perry makes comments that, gee, special event fees, we, we need to give $400,000 to the Academy Awards to help keep them in town. It's not a business fiscal stimulus package. Keep that in mind. This is money for the community. So, the problem needs to be addressed, but it's not supposed to be through this. So, please make sure this makes it into the community.
And no further speakers. No further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item.
And Madam President, ENF will previously continue to tomorrow's meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Item 37, called special for cards.
All right, we'll go to Van Nuys for Mr. Matthew Dowd if he has enough time remaining. Okay, Mr. Go to Van Nuys. Uh, Mr. Dowd?
See, look at, look at the outright bias already. I've only had two comments on the agenda and then she's like, oh, we've run out of time. Like, you can't wait for me to run out of time. What's up with that, Jam Perry? And I'd expect Deon to pick me up on that because that was one I addressed directly to her. Anyway, item 37, Matt Dowd, Channel 35, they love this show. Dennis Zine talked about the merry-go-round. There's obviously still problems of Venice and Bill Rosendahl hasn't taken care of it, but let me talk about the special event declaration, the 42nd Annual Palos Verdes Marathon and Community Run and Walk, Janice Hahn, Tom Labonge, the Hollywood Couple of Counsel. I seen Mr. Labonge paying lip service already. It was great. Thank you.
There are no speakers in the queue on this item. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item.
Item 38, called special for cards.
All right. Our cards are Mr. Zumadog, Mr., Ms. Isis, and, uh, Mr. Anthony again.
Yes, it's the encore grand finale, agenda item of all time. It's the mayor's proposed budget hearings and I'm here to say, please vote yes. We need public hearings on the mayor's budget. Let me tell you something, people. Here's why we're in this situation. Here's what I would tell the mayor. Mayor, you took record revenue when you stepped into office and you spent it like MC Hammer on an irresponsible sho, irresponsible shopping spree. The money didn't make it into the community. Here's what's going to have to happen now, people. I'm no longer running for mayor so I can say the things that need to be said. And here is what, here's what's happening, people. Either city workers from police, fire, unions, council members, everybody, either all city workers are giving back their pay, there's going to be a rollback on pay and benefits, or else we're going to start firing people. Plain and simple. Now, here's what's going to happen. The people that make these decisions with the unions, well, they're the more veteran senior, uh, uh, members of the unions, so they're going to say, no, no, we're not going to take pay cuts. Go ahead and fire people. So, that's just what's coming. So, you can sit here all day long and talk about, we're going to do this and that. You, you screwed up, Mayor Antonio Vierigosa. It's too late now. All right? So, I'm here to say that I think that part of this budget hearing should be a recall campaign for Antonio because if you allow him to continue the next four years like the first four years, then it's, it's going to be all hell breaks loose. Go rent a copy of Mad Max. They're going to make a remake. It's going to be called Antonio Vierigosa. And I'm also here to say--
He's not talking about the budget hearings.
Stop this clock. Mr. Mr. Dog, if you could please talk about the issue before us.
Let me explain to people why I am on topic. Let me just read it. It's relative to scheduling public hearings and the reason why we need these public hearings, I say yes, because the public needs to get the mayor in line and let him know that he's not ever going to become governor. And finally, part of the budget needs to be addressing Dr. Demings, 14 points to address the immeasurable waste. You have to do more with less. Part of the meeting should be Zumadog talking about Demming--
Thank you very much. Ms. Isis will be our next speaker, followed by Mr. Anthony, and then we will go back to Van Nuys for Matthew Dowd.
Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. As you know, uh, we are in the midst of a depression and with this budget, um, that the mayor is soon to approve for the, uh, 2009, 2000, 2010, I wish to, uh, be of service in any way possible and I propose that we implement a bartering service program. Thus, this should serve to, um, bring in, uh, good relations between the neighborhoods and, uh, that would mean, um, that we could barter food, clothes, um, and, uh, overall look out for each other and, uh, that would say a lot for the mayor if he can, uh, you would say a lot for the mayor if he can, you know, hit this one out over the ballpark and in a sense, he would look like he is bringing the community together and then getting things done. So, you know, there are kosher foods, there are kosher programs out there that people are willing to share and we should definitely consider this ASAP. Let's do it now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anthony, and then we will go back to Van Nuys for Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Good morning, City Council. This is regarding the holding of a public hearing on the mayor's proposed budget. We want to know what exactly he wants to do here, being that we are in a budget crisis not only here in Los Angeles but across the nation. Since 2005, the spending has increased thirty-two percent and most of that has been on municipal salaries. We want to find out what he wants to do with that also. There's a whole array of different items that we can talk on regarding his budget, but we do have to hold public hearings so that way, so that way all of us know what exactly is going to happen. Thank you.
Out to Van Nuys for Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. Unlike the mayor of Los Angeles, we budget our time and our allocation so that we can cover a lot of these topics, so we're qualified to probably do more in this city than the current mayor's doing, but this is a great idea, I'm in favor of it. I urge everybody to vote yes for this purely for the reason that the mayor, Antonio Villarosa, needs to face the public and finally, at some kind of forum like this and hear what people have to say about the budget. Because the city council and this mayor have driven the city into, you know, a half a billion-dollar debt. You know, and that's not chump change, that's a lot of money and he's going about the repair of that budget the wrong way, he's scaring more people away from the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. That marks the end of public comment. There are no speakers on the queue on this item, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item forty, call special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item forty.
I'd just like to move that item in public session because we've already approved the settlement. This merely restructures the payment of this settlement and the city attorney may have something more formal to say.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. The settlement involves council authorizing payment of $285,000 upon settlement of the case in this fiscal year and plaintiff agrees to not reapply for possession with the department among other terms of the settlement agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. There are no other speakers in the queue, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item forty-one, call special for cards.
All right, Mr. Anthony, you are here for item forty-one and then we will go to the Valley for Miriam Fogler and Matthew Dowd.
This is item forty-one, is that correct? Okay. They want to do a fee waiver again. I spoke on earlier about the fee waiver for the Elgrido Festival, they're spending $105,000 on the Spring Carnival event, now they want to do another fee waiver for another event for $42,000. We haven't cleaned up our own backyard. Two days ago, they brought in one dump truck and one bulldozer to start cleaning up. Why don't they start cleaning this up? We don't need more parties, we don't need more fee waivers for these special event fees. Some of them are nice, this one's not. Forty-two thousand plus a hundred and five thousand, we have a hundred and fifty thousand now we could put towards our own backyard. How about we get this straight? Our community needs our help. When you help one person, you help a family. When you help one family, you help a community.
He's not speaking on these fee waivers.
Okay, stop the clock for just a moment. Mr. Anthony, I have to admonish you and ask you to listen to the direction of the city attorney, okay?
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take care of our own backyard. These people need some help. There's a burned rubble back here, forty-two thousand, here's another fee waiver. Let's put it towards a good use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will go to Van Nuys. I understand Ms. Fogler is no longer there, but Mr. Matthew Dowd is there. So Mr. Dowd, you have one minute left for today.
Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure, Channel Thirty-Five, Matt Dowd, the outlaw Zuma Dogg doing the tag team, Van Nuys and downtown. I agree with Mr. Anthony, that is something that has to be cleaned up. The, I do want to point out, the farmer's market, forty-two thousand, that's a full year, so it's not a one-off thing. That's actually a full year that that farmer's market gets subsidized. But what is interesting, we've got the Dyke Day Los Angeles on June thirteenth, we're approving that today for the viewers and the city council. Eric Garcetti and Bill Rosendahl have got together and it's the Dyke Day Los Angeles, so that's thirty-two hundred dollars. Mr. Anthony, you can have your eye on that, that little one, that's one. There's another forty-five hundred dollar sidewalk sale in Lincoln Heights, yes, that's for all the property those people in Lincoln Heights lost when they were evicted out of their apartments, no doubt. I'm over my time, it's been great, I'll see you probably tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Alarcon?
The speaker is incorrect. The debris removal process is fully funded by the City of Los Angeles and we expect reimbursement from FEMA. I don't know what he's talking about.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Alarcon. Would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item forty-three, call special for cards.
Well, let's see, the only card we have here now is from Mr. Matthew Dowd and he has used his allotment for today. So we have no speakers in the queue, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item forty-five, call special for cards.
I have a card from Dr. Clyde Williams, Mr. Dr. Clyde Williams.
I oppose the lease as written right now for the MacArthur Neighborhood Council. Why should the MacArthur Neighborhood Council be held to more restrictive terms and conditions than the city holds over the Autry National Center? Autry has had a free drive on eleven acres for twenty years in historic Griffith Park. Why charge any amount for the MacArthur Neighborhood Council, which is a volunteer organization, when the city has not collected even twenty dollars from the Autry? Why require reporting from MacArthur NC when the city hasn't even gotten one report in twenty years from the Autry? Declare the Autry in default and apply equal rules and regulations for all leases under the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. All right, there are no speakers in the queue on this item, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll. And then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order of business?
Item forty-nine, call special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning to our viewers out there. This again is a resolution that has to do with HR 1283, which would amend Title X of the United States Code to enhance the readiness of the armed forces by replacing the current policy concerning homosexuality in the armed forces, also known as Don't Ask, Don't Tell, with a policy of nondiscrimination based on sexual orientation. Those of you might know that I am a veteran and I served my country honorably for two years. In that role, my first year, I was a psychoanalyst in a mental hygiene clinic, seeing eight or nine Vietnam vets a day. The second year, I was the chief advisor to the commanding general of Fort Carson, Colorado, as an enlisted man, and began to change the new army into the modern volunteer army, which then became the forerunner for what President Nixon had done. I'm an openly gay man, I wasn't open then. Back in the Vietnam era, we kept ourselves completely off the charts, but many of us serve our country honorably every particular year or time. The most outrageous moment was the other day when Bush got rid of a bunch of lesbians and gay men who were translators, who understood the language of Iraq. How outrageous can you be? But gay people deserve the same basic human and civil rights as everybody else. We're part of the culture and part of the tradition of our great country and the world. And when you see that the Brits and the Israelis allow gay people in, President Obama clearly said one of his first moves would be to get rid of the Don't Ask, Don't Tell. And of course, we expect that leadership from him and we also expect him to separate in the marriage, church and state, and go forward with civil rights and human rights on that level as well. But colleagues, I ask for your support unanimously, once again, support, Don't Ask, Don't Tell being repealed in the federal government and this will send a message to our new president to act on that issue now. I ask for a yes vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Please open the roll on that item as there's no other, no further speakers in the queue. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting an referral?
Motions are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
All right, members, are there any announcements?
Madam President?
Mr. Weiss, do you have an announcement?
No, I apologize. At the request of the Police Department, thirty-four and thirty-five, forthwith to the mayor, please. Sorry.
Mr. Clerk, do you have that? Thirty-four and thirty-five, go forthwith per Mr. Weiss. Members, any announcements? Mr. Labonge has an announcement.
Tremendous service for Kenny Gardner yesterday, which many of us attended in his wonderful tribute to his life, fifty-three-year-old, a beautiful man who was, had much love in the Crenshaw Christian Center as his life was honored yesterday. Kenneth Gardner, LAPD.
Mr. Parks?
Oh, pardon.
Any other announcements? Would you all please rise for adjourning motions? And our first adjourning motion will be done by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Winslow Joseph Grineer, Senior, who passed away Saturday, February the seventh. He was born in New Orleans. In 1941, he enlisted in the U.S. Army. He was a hero in World War II where after, he was honorably discharged from the Army but was awarded the Purple Heart and also three Bronze Stars for his heroic valor. Moved to Los Angeles, became the first African-American salesman to work at the Inglewood Cemetery. After a thirty-four-year career in the Veterans Administration, he started the Do-All Home Service where he began to work to give back to the community. He passed away on February seventh, 2009, and he survived by his wife Gloria and six children and a host of other family members and he was interned at the Inglewood Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
I have to do a technical thing of forthwith on something, but Madam-
All right, hang, hold on just a second. Mr. Zein, do you have adjourning motion?
Yes, I do, Madam President. Councilmember Goo, who's not here, asked me to do this motion along with Councilmember Smith, the three of us on this motion for Dallas, or Dale Boardman. Dallas was born in Nebraska, grew up in Iowa, served United States Marines, Air National Guard, United States Air Force, attended Los Angeles Valley College, UCLA, California State University, Northridge. In the mid-fifties, when Dallas began his career in the accounting field, he and his wife Roberta also began their years of volunteerism. They began by becoming involved with local politics and soon became active in supporting all those wonderful organizations that touched their children's lives. Dallas seemed to have always been the treasurer of the PTA units at all the schools their four children attended. He was also very active in the San Fernando Valley Girl Scouts Council, the Western Boys' Baseball League, the West Valley YMCA, 4-H Clubs and Future Farmers of America. Dallas was an active member of the Chamber of Commerce and a member of and served in leadership positions on many chambers, beginning with the Hollywood Chamber where he had leadership position in the annual Santa Claus Lane Parade for nearly two decades. Also proud to have been part of the Encino Mid Valley and Recede Chambers, past president of Recede Chamber and treasurer emeritus. Felt that we cannot simply sit on the sidelines. Dallas always said, take responsibility for your community. He recognized that every group and organization must have a volunteer corps to continue to operate and serve the city. In the late seventies, Dallas became involved in the Fifty-First Agricultural District, San Fernando Valley Fair. Served as a treasurer to the board of directors for a few years and then appointed to the board by Governor Jerry Brown. Dallas has been a huge supporter, advocate and hard worker in all aspects of the fair and especially the life stock option. Served as president of the board of directors from 1985 to eighty-eight, again appointed to the board of directors in 2003, continued to play a very active role as the director of the Valley Fair. Dallas worked very hard and was very hopeful that a permanent fairground would be a reality in the future of the San Fernando Valley. The Association of California Car Clubs benefited from Dallas's time and interest for more than three decades. He served as treasurer and on the board of directors, advocate on behalf of all the car collectors in the state, regularly met with elected officials in Sacramento to assess and advise on legislation that might affect their particular group and their hobby. Dallas was a huge supporter of the LAPD, volunteered at many community events to help the Mid Valley Police Council for many years, took a leadership role in all aspects of the West Valley PALS, organizing the annual golf tournament, worked very hard to raise funds to keep Recede Youth Center funded and working to serve the needs of young people in the community. Dallas served as a leader in the PALS organization for nearly twenty years. Dallas's lifelong outstanding service to his community continued to benefit his defining persona. He will be deeply missed by his family and friends. He survived by his wife Roberta, four children, Bridget, Julie, Wendy and Robert. And just a list of the organizations that Dallas was involved in. National Charity League, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, Hollywood YMCA, Hollywood Rotary Club, San Fernando Valley Girl Scout Council, California State PTA, West Valley YMCA, Western Boys Baseball League, 4-H Club of America, San Fernando Valley Volunteers in Service to America, Encino Exchange Club, Encino Chamber of Commerce, National Association of Enrolled Agents, NAEA, San Fernando Valley Chapter, Association of California Car Clubs, Fifty-First Agricultural Association, Ameriquis Capital Corp., Los Angeles Olympic Organizing Committee, Recede Chamber of Commerce, West Valley Police Activity League, California State University, Northridge. Dallas Boardman was a personal friend and his wife been involved in the San Fernando Valley for many, many years and I remember the Memorial Day Parade, Dallas was, loved old cars. He had this yellow Model T that I rode in in the parade and he had the rumble seat in back and I went to his house because he wanted to sell it, this was a few months ago, and we drove around in this car through Greg Smith's district. This car had the four-banger engine and it would, it would move like a parade, very, very slow. It didn't have disc brakes, it had bear brakes and you would think you have to push a few in the ground to stop the car. And I was going to buy the car, but the steering wheel hit my legs and you couldn't adjust the seat, so ended up not buying the car. But we had a great time. We had a, we had a great, we had a great time. He was a major car buff and he had another vintage car. His wife is a wonderful member of the community. Dallas was a pillar in the community, he's going to be sorely missed. Dallas Boardman, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zein, and I would like to adjourn in memory of Captain William Moran, who passed away on Saturday afternoon, February twenty-eighth, at the age of fifty-three years old. He was a hero to his family and community, an admired friend and a very respected, well-respected individual. Some of you may know his wife, Linda Moran, who is the identical twin to Brenda Wilson, Linda and Brenda, who run the New Image Emergency Shelter located in my district where they house anywhere from four hundred and fifty to six hundred people at any given time. Mr. or Captain Moran was an attorney providing pro bono legal services and he was also a captain with the California State Military Reserve. He was respected for his deep commitment to the rule of law and his profound, profound devotion to duty. He is survived by his parents, Thomas and Dorothy Moran, and of course, his wife Linda, his children Megan Johnson and Michael Moran, in addition to a host of other family and friends. His funeral mass was held at St. Thomas More Parish Church in the city of Irvine this past Friday and he will continue to live in the hearts and minds of his family and friends. Mr. Rosendahl would like to second that, thank you. All right, there are no further, oh, yes, you have it correct.
Item forty-two, go forthwith, it's to reinstate an award.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, there are no further items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the roll.